I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of September 12th, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call.
Mayor Hunter?
Here.
The clerks here: Trustee Eddington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzal.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Newroll.
Here.
Manager May.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome. Too bad it's not cruising nights tonight because it's a beautiful day and short agenda. Open forum. Is there anybody here who wants to address the board on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close. Open forum, move on to reports. And I'd like to call Larry and Jenny up to the podium to talk about the Community Arts Initiative.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. As you may recall, at the beginning of the summer, this past May, we came before you to talk about the Community Arts Initiative and sharing a bunch of ideas of things that we could kind of start moving towards. And a year ago, Westmont Special Events created a downtown arts forum on a monthly basis that was tied into the cruising nights. At that time, we had two new businesses in the downtown that were both arts-related, and so there was some good synergy to try to make some things happen. We had two events last year, and we probably had 20-plus artists and a couple hundred participants show up and take part in that. And because of that success, we decided to, let's try that again. And in addition, Trustee Barker, under the Westmont First Commission Committee, this past spring, I suppose it was, had a forum in which we brought local artists together to talk about how do we grow that synergy and support the local arts community. So with that, we decided to do that again this summer. Of course, we no longer had a space. Those two businesses were no longer around, but we talked to Bill Califfutt. He's the owner of the property that was the Artist Block Gallery. And with his generosity, he allowed us to use his space, and we had three events this past summer, so we want to talk through those real quick. We had them on the last Thursday of each month, so that was June, July, and August. Once again, we had probably over 20 artists total participate, and I would say up to 100 folks who, you know, came in and visited the shows. That picture there on the left, that's Jenny here, and it's also Maggie South. They were two of the driving forces behind this and coordinated all of the events and the recruitment of the artists and the layout within the building and so forth. A lot of these folks who you see here in the pictures who are local artists, they're folks either from Westmont or nearby Westmont, and they were extremely excited to have the opportunity to come down and present their work. The painting on the left there was done by a young lady who has special needs, and she and her family were, once again, extremely excited to have the opportunity to come down and present. She brought down probably about 20 of her paintings, and as you can see, it's wonderful. She has an incredible eye, but all these artists do. This is an event about the appreciation for art. We didn't go into too much of like juriing who would participate and who would not. It's more about, do you love art, and we will support you. And so it's a forum to come out. This lady here on the left, her name's Linda, she's not from Westmont, but in the past year, she has decided she loves Westmont. And part of it is because of things like this. She's not only involved with this arts group, and every time I see her, has lots of ideas about how this can continue and grow, but also very involved in the local music scene. Just go through some more paintings here, but lots of folks participated. The lady on the left here, that's Tammy Deck. She owns TLD Design, which is over on East Quincy Street. She's been there for a number of years, I would say 20 years maybe. And so it's sort of, she's sort of out of the way of the downtown, so she maybe doesn't get as much attention as some others, but she's obviously thriving and successful. So she was, once again, excited to come down, not only for her to display art, but she does what's called Artist in Action. So she brought down her materials, and she traded the art right in front of the people as well as allowed them to participate. This is Charlie. Do you want to talk about Charlie real quick?
Sure, this is actually my uncle, so known him all my life and always inspired me to be a painter and an artist as well. So he was actually at a gallery in Downers Grove that closed down last year. So when I told him about this initiative, he was very excited and very appreciative to come and actually to be able to display for free. Huge deal for an artist. That does not happen ever. He did sell a few pieces, so he was very happy and grateful, made a lot of contacts and connections, so. Very happy. I don't remember her name. Another artist who is actually here in Westmont, great style, great design, so she was also very happy to be there. Was she from Westmont? I think she's from Westmont as well. Yeah, she's actually displayed at the library, correct? A month ago?
Yeah, she's been displayed at the library. She's also working with us to offer a lot of programming for the community, specific hand-up art classes.
So giving art classes and hands-on programming at the library. A group of young ladies who got together to display a collection of their artwork.
And I'll mention, Jenny mentioned briefly that her uncle Charlie had sold some pieces. Actually, more than half of the artists sold their work, and the overall take of the entire group was in the thousands of dollars. So it's kind of exciting that they were able to make some money. That's sort of like the dream of an artist, is like not only to be able to show it, but then have people appreciate it, and then, of course, buy it. So this picture maybe doesn't feel like it belongs in here, but this was an idea basically that came forth from Trustee Barry, who was visiting a place out of town. But as you see here, there's two metal electrical boxes, types of things, things that are all over town, and they are what they are. Everybody sees those. Well, this is what some communities do with things like that.
Oh, nice.
And so Trustee Barry was interested in showing that and letting us know that that's opportunity. These are canvases, or could be considered as canvases, you know, for the board to decide and determine, but possible opportunities for beautification and so forth. But anyway, that's one example. Where's this all going? As we talked about, there was a lot of synergy, a lot of conversation, and Jenny and Maggie were the main facilitators of that. But do you want to talk a little bit about the enthusiasm of the artists and what their thoughts might be in the future?
As I talked to a lot of the different artists, a lot of them who, you know, live in Westmont or work in Westmont, some of them, their house is small. They don't have workspace. They would love to have a place to go and work and do their art away from home, or to get away from home, maybe, you know, the kids, you want to get away from the kids for a little bit and do your artwork somewhere else. We also were thinking of having classes. How fun are art classes, whether you're a beginner, intermediate, advanced, anyone can take a class. And then, working with local businesses and a collaborative effort, let's say, like Nights at Columbus, they have a beautiful outdoor garden. We do an outdoor painting class, and you go into the Nights at Columbus, grab a soda or drink, and you come outside and you're painting outside in the fresh air. Artists love that kind of stuff, so that's a thought as well. And then just having, and then juried art shows where we can show our work again to the public, and maybe a league as well. You know, art leagues are kind of big and important to artists, to get together and, you know, have a cooperation with each other and help each other out and learn from each other.
And with talking with these artists, we were facilitating conversation. What if, you know, what if all the artists pulled together and put together a cooperative and worked together to find a space, find a home to display, to work, and possibly teach? This picture's in here because, as we all know, the space that's in the train station has been not utilized in a public way for many years, and there's lots of reasons for that. But there's the opportunity potentially for that area to be cleaned up and to be a display space. If you're on the lower level and you're looking through those glasses, if that room is cleaned up and made into a presentable way, and let's just say had art in there to be displayed, to promote our local artists, to have art themes, so to speak, that's a possibility. So that was one thing that we were considering. Other locations, you know, if it were to grow into such a situation where an art league is formed and people wanted to pay dues, people wanted to work towards having a permanent space, we looked at a couple of places. The Corner Store on the left, I won't share financial information, but we checked with them in terms of what that cost might be, and then we put together an initial budget of what if we had 20 artists, and each artist was putting forth a certain amount of money to make things happen? We think it's a possibility. And then, in addition, for a space that might be not utilized, maybe it's been not opened as a business for a certain amount of time, maybe there's an opportunity to work a deal with them. And so we put the Artist Block in there. Now, that's a very large building. I think it's, I'm not going to remember how many square feet, but it's one of the biggest buildings in the downtown, and so the rent is high. But anyway, just some things to think about, and that leads us to, you know, where we're at. So we're interested in getting feedback from the board at this time in terms of what's going on with the Artist Initiative. As mentioned in May, we're moving forward, or planning to, to secure a coordinator and a stipend so that a person is designated as the facilitator of all that. That person would not be Jenny nor myself. You know, secure interest in establishing a location, and so potentially a train station and/or another space in the downtown, and then a core team of advisors and initial membership. I'd say all of the 20 participating artists this past summer would all be interested in creating an art league. And then also, as we talked about last May, moving forward with the promotion and the start of a juried art show, which would be launched in January of 2020. And that's all we have. Any questions?
So it progresses.
Mm-hmm.
Well done.
Sorry. Thank you.
What do you think, Bruce, a good place for you?
One day, if I learned how to paint, but they're doing great work. It's just a wonderful addition to Westmont.
Thank you. Moving on. I want to comment about an event we had last week. It was our, we can have, Westmont Post Office Dedication. We've got some pictures and video. It was dedicated to James Robinson, and it's now on Village YouTube channel and Village Photo Gallery, and he was a Congressional Medal of Honor. His grandfather was mayor several times, and our local American Legion, especially Frank Trout and Hal Burke, were, it's very hard to get a post office named, and they were very, very persistent in getting, they started with Roscom, and he got the ball going, and then finally, this year, the post office was dedicated. So we've got some videos to show you. I was proud to be there. It was great turnout, and everybody did a fabulous job.
So the video is a link.
I thought you were going to, ah, I thought you were going to show it.
It's too long.
All right. Ceremony?
It's a whole ceremony.
I'll take, Eddington usually talks about this, but the Lions Club Oktoberfest, October 4th and 5th, will be right here in downtown Westmont, right in front of Village Hall, the old Pawaw Day site. And they'll running 5K race will be on Saturday, October 5th, and it's called Running for a Cause, For the Cause. They have food, music, car show, craft and art show, and a health fair. That will be coming up. And trustee Eddington, will, do you have anything to add on mine?
The only thing to add is, it's called Running for a Cause. It was developed from one of our newer members in our club, and it's dedicated towards diabetes and diabetes awareness.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. I'll move on to Clerk Simmski.
I just have a couple announcements. The scarecrow, I can't say the word, decorating contest will be taking place soon, so if you would like to decorate a scarecrow to be displayed downtown Westmont, visit the Chamber website to sign up. So everybody get involved, it's fun, they're cute, there are a lot of them. And I want to remind everybody, and I will do this again, the beginning of October, the village offices will be closed on Columbus Day, October 14th. To the public, staff will be working.
Thank you. Trustee Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. First comment would be that Westmont First is going to meet on September 24th. We're going to have some complete count census training, and we're going to promote and support the census that's coming up in 2020. So we'll have that meeting on September 4th. And then, Mayor, I have the privilege to introduce tonight the Environmental Improvement Committee, and I want to call them up to the podium so they can tell us and tell the public what they've been up to over the last year and what we intend to do for 2020. We're looking ahead, and we have several members here tonight, and if they would go to the podium and make sure you say your name, I'm very proud of these people and the work that they do. They're volunteers, and they're doing great work in our community. So we'll start with Mr. Yader, who we, some of us know.
Mayor, member and members of the board, as well as residents out there watching and listening, it's my pleasure to be here in front of you all and talking about the accomplishments of the Environmental Improvement Committee. As the village's liaison to that committee, it's my privilege to work with some of the hardest-working volunteers we have in town on some very good beneficial environmental issues in the community. They are a force for the good, and we are continually busy. We meet the first Monday of every month at the Westmont Public Library at 6:00 PM. Anybody is welcome to join us, and we're always interested in having other residents come and either check it out or give us an extra hand for whatever we have going on. To talk about a lot of the things that we've had going on this past year and some of the things coming up, I'd like to bring up a few members to discuss 2018 and then 2019 events. Glenn Gabriel and Brittany Smith.
Good evening. You have the handout and also the objection on our 2018 recap, which several members have heard about. Some of the highlights, the diversion of the waste stream, almost 6,000 pounds. That is exclusive of the curbside program. The state of Illinois on the curbside mandates or targets 25% diversion. Westmont exceeded that at 34%, and we're essentially in line with the county as those numbers are currently reported. The EIC, though, is moving toward examining ways to change the ratio and improve our recycling rate and reduce our net trash tonnage deposited in the landfills. Other actions we're doing on a proactive basis for 2019, especially the composting program, trying to integrate a curbside compost program with the yard waste collection, which covers a good part of the year. We've been looking at things like a special collection program for Q1 in 2020, further diversion of nonhazardous household waste, and looking at measures like the Dark Skies Initiative, for example, light pollution issue. And another significant one, well, the library speaker series, in terms of bringing forward community information, has been very important, as well as supplementary programs that the library offers.
Yeah, so our biggest goals for 2019, like Glenn said, is really looking into the composting issue, but also different events that we can hold for people to do different recycling events for items that you cannot put in your trash, so we make sure to keep that out of our regular trash. We also are looking into the Soul Smart Program, which basically we want to look at the permits and different codes that the village has to see if there's any hoops that people have to jump through for solar energy, to try to just ease the way for people to be more interested in solar energy and be able to have various solar energy initiatives within their homes. Also, the speaker series. So previously, we used to do a speaker series just in April for Earth Month, but we would actually like to continue that throughout the year, ensuring that the library and the EIC is working together to do environmental programming throughout the year to engage our community, either to do communication. We've sometimes had organizations like ComEd or Waste Management come in to explain recycling because some, I didn't even know some of the things that I was putting in my recycle bin shouldn't be put in the recycle bin, or just energy-saving programs through ComEd, or things like gardening, attracting pollinators, or various other initiatives like the Dark Skies Initiative about light pollution that maybe a lot of people just have maybe heard a little bit of, but don't know a lot of information on. So those are our big initiatives for 2019, but obviously, kind of continuing to do our big programs that we always do every year. So we do a seedling giveaway in April, John organizes that so that we can give various seedlings to the community members. There's a fall plant sale where the funds, we work with the Conservation Foundation, and the funds will go to Richmond Gardens, that's actually coming up. John probably will plug that if you're interested. We'll continue to do that. We'll also continue to do various recycling programs like pumpkin composting. This year's is November 2nd at the Westmont Public Library from 9:00 to noon. And then our holiday lights recycle, so we always collect holiday lights after Thanksgiving. This year, we will include it at Wicked West Fest on that 19th, I believe, right? Are we collecting then? Because we've noticed that Halloween lights are now becoming more common, so we also want to definitely include that. So we will continue new initiatives in 2019, but continue to do the programs that you have seen us do throughout the years.
And it wasn't mentioned, but this weekend, actually, Saturday morning and into the afternoon, the Westmont Public Library is having a Monarch Festival at Ty Warner Park. It's from 11:00 to 2:00, correct? 11:00 to 2:30. So come on out and get educated on some Monarch initiatives. There's, I think, three different speakers talking that day and a lot of different tables with information. We will also have pumpkin composting. That'll be November 2nd. It's the first Saturday after Halloween, and bring your pumpkins out if they're ready to be thrown out. And instead of actually throwing them out, you can compost them, it's better environmentally. Brittany mentioned the native tree and shrub sale, and I see it here on the screen, but I don't see it up on the other screen. But that is going on right now, it's all online. The pickup will be October 5th, so it's just a pickup, it's not actually a plant sale on site. You have to preorder, and then you come pick up. Pickup will be at the Westmont Street Department, that's 328 South Wilmette Avenue. Again, Saturday, October 5th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. It says PM on the sheet, I guess that's inaccurate, but 9:00 to 11:00 AM. I think that's it. We have one other thing, the holiday lights recycling coming up as well. That will start early in November and go through the end of January. So there's a lot of going on. Again, anybody out there, if you're interested, come out, give us a hand, sit through a meeting, see what it's all about.
Why don't you have the other commission members come up, introduce themselves, if they want to add anything?
Krista Stenulis, a commission member. I think everything was kind of covered, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but.
Thank you.
And one of our hardest-working members, who's also apparently one of our shyest members, is Jerry Rigdon, but she's been a great asset for the group, and she never misses an event, and she's always there when you need her. She's been great, so thanks, Jerry, and everybody else as well. Thank you.
Mayor, these are the folks that do the storm drain stenciling, go to the street fair, you know, put these workshops together in conjunction with the library to educate the residents, to look at our composting, our recycling, and get that information in the hands of communications, or get that out into the community so that we're, you know, trying to do the right thing. And, you know, there's a lot more work that they do. This is just really a highlight of all the things that they're paying attention to, and it's a great group of people, and like they said earlier at the committee meeting, there are no short meetings. We were hoping for 90-minute meetings, we haven't made it yet. It's always, it's always longer than that, but it's time well spent, so.
And thank you. It's a lot of work.
Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items. The Administration Finance Committee meeting met at 4:30 today. We had discussion about the Finance Department received an award from, we have their photo taken today, so that was very nice to hear. We learned about the business licensing posting, that we're going to have the ability to renew our business licenses online and print their own certificates. Water billing will go out to building owners rather than tenants. It'll protect the village and the building owner as well in case a tenant skips on their payments. And then, also learned a lot about our banking for the village and how we're protecting the public's money and just taking care of everything through the Finance Department. Thank you, Finance Director Parker, that was very informative. In addition to that, we have wine, a fall wine tasting at Dolce's Restaurant and Wine Bar, and that's Saturday afternoon. It's 11, sorry, 2:00 to 6:00 PM. They have tickets online you can buy, and they're selling their wines at a pretty decent price. We have the Pet Promenade coming up on the 22nd. It's Sunday, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Ty Warner Park. We have contests, vendors, demonstrations, and a whole lot more. And something that you haven't seen a lot of, and that is a cat groomer. She brings her, a mobile cat groomer. She brings her van out, and she grooms my cats, and I talked her into coming to this event, so she'll be at the Pet Promenade. And then last but not least, the Wicked West Fest, October 19th, 10:30 to 2:00, downtown Westmont. We have a costume contest, we have pumpkin smashing, casket races, which are always fun, trick-or-treat trails, and a whole lot more. So visit the westmontchamber.com for additional details. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And one quick question, Larry Forsberg, this is the event that was postponed, the pet, and is going to stay in November, I mean, October?
That is the current plan.
September, all right, I've got my months. Trustee Newroll.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be September 26th, right here, 4:30, Village Hall. I asked Director Ramsey on the Public Works Committees, he's going to give us update on the project, so we kind of know what's going on and what the timeline is. And next, just a couple of more fun and kind of exciting items. Last Friday, we, thanks to the mayor and I, Granite Construction, a billion-dollar firm, a worldwide construction company, hosted their second annual charity golf outing at Oprah Kills, and they raised over 14, I think it's now it's up to $15,000 for Lurie's Children's Hospital. And DM, Representative Mizaki was there to help kick it off. The goof in the middle is my brother Ryan, who works for Granite Construction, and he's also Forest Park Commissioner, so he enjoys coming here and bringing it to Westmont. And fortunately, the mayor wasn't able to come, but he asked Deanna Phelan in his absence, and she, of course, did. And to the left is a, the lady in the red is one of the head folks at Lurie's Hospital, so very great event. And then next was another one. Yesterday, we Yesterday, we, the mayor and I, this is my third time going, the middle school has a student council elections, and they always ask to speak about civic involvement, and it's always a lot of fun. You're in a big, you're in their assembly in the gym, there's a few hundred people there, and parents are there, and you get to meet all these kids that are giving real thought-out, well-spoken speeches, and it's always a lot of fun. So they really are, they do a good job there. I know the mayor was real impressed for being there this time, and you did get off easy, though. They didn't ask you any questions like they used to do. They were happy you were there, and I know it was a lot of fun, so that's all I have, sir.
And I do have to say that the students were so well-behaved. They really respect the principal and the assistant principal, and it was well-run. Last year, real quick, trustee Nero gave a water fountain to the school. This year, they wanted him to provide air conditioning for the gym.
Yeah. So I got to get another job.
All right, we'll move on. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a EDC meeting last week, and we had an exciting project that was proposed for what a lot of us know as the old Jockey Club site, which is going on, which would be behind where all of our new construction is going on in 63rd and Cass. It was from Intercontinental Real Estate Group and Development, and they had proposed a four-acre project that would be done in two phases, with 180-unit apartment buildings with amenities, and then also a tie-in to the commercial development going on on 63rd Street. Larry's going to come up in a minute and go over a lot of the vacancies and what's going on here, but this was a very exciting project that is coming forward, and got a positive recommendation from the EDC Committee. So our next meeting will be on October 4th at 9:00 a.m., and we meet right in the room next door here to the Village Hall. The public is welcome, and just like projects like this, this is the first stage, so it's a very exciting time to come, and again, we encourage the public to come and attend those meetings. Now, I'm excited to introduce Rick Bailey. He's the owner of Right Way 2.0 Blueprint at 138 North Cass Avenue. We just celebrated a ribbon-cutting there, and he's new to this Westmont location, and very excited to have you here tonight. Please.
Pressure's on. Well, thank you, thank you very much for having me tonight. As he told, my name is Rick Bailey, and I did open up a blueprint company. Fortunately, I'm in right downtown Westmont, the perfect location. We came up with the name Right Way 2.0 because my father had a blueprint company in downtown Chicago called Right Way Reproductions. And a couple of weeks ago, I had a customer come in just to see if it was the same Right Way that was downtown. Of course, you came to the right place. He was from Skidmore, S.O.M., which was our biggest account back in Chicago. I worked at a small blueprint company down the street, we won't mention the suburb. And fortunately, I'm back in Westmont, and I took most of the customers, since I've dealt with them for years, they know me, and they're coming back, which is lucky for me. I need all the help I can get. Most of the businesses are from construction companies, home builders, engineers, surveyors, architects. I'm also trying to do banners, photo enlargements, magnets for cars, mounting on foam boards or any other substrates, too. That's pretty much all I have, I think.
Well, this is very exciting, you know, that business has been vacant for a long time, and he's across from Bank of America by Westmont Restaurant and Convenience, are all very close to you, and walkable for a lot of our residents to get poster boards and any type of printing they may need.
Come in, anytime, you're always welcome. Have a bottle of water.
We're sure glad you chose Westmont.
So all bodies, thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. And now Larry, if I could pull on you to come up and give us an update on the current economic development activity, and some updates on some projects that we're all aware of, and maybe some ones we're not.
By all means, good evening, and we're going to count on Rick to connect us with some of those architects and some of those developers that are coming in to do work here as they're doing that. So I've got a short list of things, key things that economic development's working on right now, so I'm just going to work my way through it. As we go through, if there's any questions, just stop, and I'll be happy to give you a little bit more detail. So for September 2019, one of the common questions I get is what's going on with the Medical Center project up on Ogden Avenue. I actually had a call yesterday. If you've seen Major Restaurant recently, it now says closed on Major Restaurant. I got a call asking if it was available for sale, and somebody who would like to buy it and move into that site. So we've explained to them that obviously, that whole project is going to be redeveloped. The tenants that are there right now have until December 31st to leave, and after December 31st, they will continue at that point, or I should say, begin to start the demo process. So that's where things are at. Some of them are closing, some of them have closed already, and some are relocating. Matter of fact, one of the vacancies I'll talk about in a little bit, one of the businesses is looking at that right now, so we're actively working with them. BMW, they've completed their project, and we're getting ready to do a ribbon-cutting for them. It turned out really well, and they're very happy with the outcome of it, and so we're excited to see that 30 million-plus project come to completion. That was a great addition, because at one time back in 2012 and '13, they were looking at moving to over to Route 83, so it's always nice to keep them here in town. Click Sports Bar and Grill is a common question, when are they going to open? They are now have their final approvals from the Fire Department, so we should be looking at sometime in the next week or two. We're working with them on doing a grand opening event, so whether or not Mike Tyson will be there or not, I'm not quite sure, but they're working on that, so. Top Lift Equipment and Sales was at planning and zoning last night, and they received their approval, so they'll be coming to the Village Board shortly. That's the business that's moving into Gene's Tire on 63rd Street. They basically sell the equipment that's used in the railroad industry lifts, that take a trailer that's on a railcar off and put it onto a truck. FMC Nanatorium, things are going quite well. They're on track, they're hoping, they're still saying April 2020, but don't be surprised if that should happen to move up a little bit. So things are going well with Nanatorium. Mariano's Fuel Station, which was approved, will be opening, their game plan is spring of 2020. Market Center Project, another major question. Everybody sees the activity that's going on, but the big question that I've been getting over the last couple of weeks is what's going on with the movie theater. The movie theater is not coming. After extensive negotiations that have been going on for a few years now with multiple movie theaters, unfortunately, there was not an opportunity that we could pull together. Financially, it kind of unraveled, and we tried very hard to get this project at both 63rd and Cass, and also even on the Holicia site, which is, well, better known as Westview North, excuse me, South. Neither one could work out the financials on this, so unfortunately, it's not going to be open, but in lieu of that, we've already have identified a 35,000-square-foot retailer that will be going into that site, so we're not hurting for an alternative. Matter of fact, we think we're in a very good place, because the last thing I think we would want to happen is for a movie theater to open, and in two or three years, if it should crash and burn, to try and repurpose a building like that is almost next to impossible, and we would be left with a situation that would be basically a white elephant, if you will. So that's the good side of that. Mediterranean Grill, a lot of questions about that. They've been working very hard, they've been going through their inspections and so forth, and they are, don't have an opening date yet, but they're pretty far along in making some progress. One North Cass, at this point, we've got our fingers crossed, we think that they'll be going to planning zoning maybe December. They've still got some work to do, there's been a lot of work, and Spencer's been very bulbous, especially in terms of the working agreement we have with them. There's been a lot of attention paid to the numbers, because the number of moving parts related to this project with land acquisition, ComEd investments to move ComEd lines, it's a very challenging project. So some people ask, well, how is it that we're able to start that project first, and here Quincy Station is already about to do demo, and this one is still kind of in the earlier stages? Well, there's just a lot more moving parts to it, but we're working on it, and it's a very high-demand site for us, and we'll get this done. The Quincy Street project, as I just mentioned, things are going forward. Nycor was over there today, they had five trucks working. There's some utilities that have to be taken care of before they can start the demo, because as soon as they're complete with the demo, they'll also be doing some excavation work, so they've got to get that site totally cleared in order to do that, so they can start going vertical as soon as the weather breaks in late winter, hopefully. Cass Avenue Dream Homes, you've probably seen the large pile of dirt, they've been moving a lot of soil over on Cass Avenue there, and it's coming along quite well. They were looking at possibly expanding that project, going a little bit further south. They just recently decided to keep it as it was originally proposed, so that's still moving along quite well, though. I also get a lot of questions about Taco Express. Taco Express obviously had that fire back in December and closed much earlier than they wanted to, but they have purchased the property at 13 West Quincy. That's their former newsstand site. They are working with their architect now. We are planning on having a meeting with them and Community Development shortly to kind of go over their plans, so that as soon as they're ready to start pulling permits, they can go as quickly as possible. So sometime in the near future, you can expect to see those delicious lunches and dinners from Taco Express come back. A lot of questions about that. Burger King Remodeling's coming along. Oakmont Point Project, we have one tenant for the one building, we're still working on the second building. They're in active discussions with a major client, and we're hoping that that will be finalized. And somewhere down the road, in hopefully 12 to 24 months, we can begin discussions for a third building on the south side of Oakmont, where the parking lot currently is, that is the ultimate goal. So as we make progress on the second building, that will not be the completion, that will just be the second phase, and we'll be looking forward to a third phase with that project. The last thing I wanted to touch on was basically commercial space throughout the community. Overall, if you look at the Ogden Avenue corridor, if you look at the Pascanelli Drive Office corridor, Chicago Naperville, even southwest Mount Business District, we see a relatively modest number of vacancies, but what we have seen in the last year is a kind of an uptick in vacancies in downtown Westmont. So I just did a quick check today. So in 2015, our vacancy rate in downtown Westmont was 23%. We had 26 vacant sites in downtown Westmont. In 2018, we were able to get that number down to 10.5%, but in the last year, in 2019, we've ticked up 4.5%, so we're at 15% in downtown right now, but five of those actually have occurred within the last, you know, year. So if you look at Moore's Mediterranean Restaurant, that's one that actually just closed a couple of months back. You might see a sign in the window saying we're closed for a month. Well, it's not accurate, they are closed, Moore is not coming back. We do have a list, Westmont Economic Development Partnership has a list of restaurants that are interested in coming in town, especially restaurants that have existing built-out space. I met with the owner of the property. He has two restaurants he would first like, that he knows personally that he would like to bring in. One's a bakery, one's an Italian restaurant, so we're seeing if that's going to work out. If not, then we're going to go to our list. So I don't expect that site to remain empty very long. He's eager to get it back filled up, as are we. Also, as Larry McIntyre mentioned earlier, Artist Block Gallery, where they had the event over the course of the summer, we had a tenant in there that left late last year, and we're looking to refill that space. Martina Arts Studio, which was right across the street, she did not renew her lease there. That's kind of a unique space, kind of a boutique space, if you will, relatively small, it's only got about 500 square feet, so it's going to be rather unique what we find to slide into that spot. Karma Hair Salon is looking for a new tenant, so we're working with them. We have been trying to relocate one of the hair salons that was in the center up on Ogden Avenue that's going to be torn down. Unfortunately, they decided to take a different offer in Downers Grove, but we've been working with other salons to see if we can marry up things there. Also, the Corner Store, which Larry also mentioned, closed about earlier in the year, and the 20 West Burlington, which was a salon, salon and prior barber shop, we're looking for a new tenant for that space also. So right now, we have 17 vacancies in downtown Westmont between Chicago Naperville, Dallas, including both Cass and Quincy Streets. You know, it's a high priority area for us, where even though we're very active working on these other projects around the community, whether it's 63rd Street, whether it's Pascanelli Drive, or the car dealers in Ogden, but I want you to know, we are not ignoring what's going on in downtown. Our downtown is our community center, it's our social center, it's a high visibility for all the people that are coming through. And by the way, we, yes, we have seen a bump up in traffic in downtown Westmont. We attribute that in large case to the construction that's going on on Route 83. We are one of the closest northwest corridors adjacent to Route 83. Personally, I love seeing more traffic in downtown Westmont, because I think that gives our business owners more opportunities to meet people, and hopefully, we get them to come back and visit us for dinner, or breakfast, or something along that line. So I just want to give you kind of an overview. You know, some of the buildings in downtown Westmont that we are working on, we've got a couple that have been empty a very long time. Matter of fact, is, you know, when I put my list together, I have nine and 11 West Quincy, and I always put down there a notation as to what was there formerly, you know, because a lot of people will say, well, you gave me an address, but what was that place? And when I started working in Westmont in 2006, that site was already empty, so somebody could help me and remind me what was there before.
Yeah, the sewing machines.
What was it?
Levis Sewing Center.
Okay, okay. But I remember when I came in June of '06, that they were just finishing the facade, and how beautiful it looked, and how disappointing it is. Obviously, we've gone through a very long and extended downturn, which didn't help the situation, but the good news with that, they've recently hired a very active broker, and we've been working together, and I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to find a tenant at a rate, a market rate that will be workable. So I wanted to just give you an overview of some of the key things that we're working on, some of the things that have shifted, and I always ask for help when it comes to, who do you know, and who do you know that knows someone that might be a good tenant for one of these locations downtown, or any location around the community? Because you never know when someone might be looking for an alternative location, their lease might be coming up somewhere else, or they're looking to expand. We're always willing and interested in talking to prospective clients, whether we've got a spot right now or not. It's having that relationship that really matters, so.
Where are LA Fitness and Raising Cane?
Yes, sir.
Those buildings are.
They're, that's all moving forward.
Will that, will they open even with, before they have the other, because I know there's another outlet next, outlot next to Raising Cane.
Those will be open prior to the other buildings.
So there'll be access to them, and.
Right. So you'll have the Mariano's, you'll have the LA Fitness, really adjacent to each other. The site plan also costs for about a 10,000-square-foot building to go just east of the LA Fitness, and then the 35,000-square-foot retailer, and the next to that, there's, they've slid up further north, the building with the three tenants, which includes the Starbucks. So all that, all those will pretty much run along the northern border of the site, opening up the parking for moving through, which actually will help Atelier also, because people will be able to park closer to that outlet.
Go back to Ogden Avenue, and I know you've been working diligently with the people from the shopping center, Las Palmas.
We are working on a 15 East Ogden, former Dunkin' Donuts site, and I think we're pretty close to having that squared away. There's some stormwater topics that have to be addressed with that particular site in order to make it work, because they wanted to expand the parking lot. The footprint of the building is equal, it's about 4,000 square feet, it's equal to the footprint they have currently in the shopping center, so I love that idea. We ended up looking at five or six sites, and quite frankly, the site that they originally preferred and was hoping to get is the former Tap House site. Unfortunately, the timing of about three or four days made all the difference in the request that they were submitting, you know, and the request that had just been submitted for Click. So Clicks will be opening, and.
And the deli, any place for them yet?
I can tell you that I talked to a couple, about a couple places downtown. My read is that she's not going to move, and she's not going to relocate it anywhere, as much as we would love her to, and as much as I'll miss her chicken soup.
Yes.
Larry, I wanted to just say thank you for the work that you guys are putting in on these things, and then, you know. on these things. And then, you know, people don't understand all the work that you have to do, but then also it has to come almost like a perfect storm. They have to come to us and want to invest and be in our community, spend their money. It has to be profitable. They're not going to go too far out on a limb. And then they have other options. I mean, these people have other options. And when they do come here, I mean, we're grateful that they're here, and we're, you know, we're supportive as a board, you know, and a staff to try to make all these things work. And I appreciate that effort. And then I did want to ask, is there any activity with Hobby Lobby, the former Hobby Lobby?
Matter of fact, I talked with the property owner today, and there's, there's some negotiations going on right now, and there's some discussions. And as soon as we know something firm, believe me, we will, we will share that. It's quite often awkward, and sometimes there's a confidentiality issue, and sometimes there's not. But sometimes it's also just very difficult to talk about something, even if there's not a confidentiality, confidentiality issue. Because you, you're never quite sure. And the movie theater is a perfect example. You know, I know one of the movie theaters that was being negotiated with, just a couple weeks ago filed for bankruptcy. So, you know, you, you think you have something, but until the deal is actually done, I'm now at the point, until we do the groundbreaking, I'm not so sure, because things just can change. The market, I mean, the retail market is changing dramatically. Everything seems to be in a major state of flux. But the really great thing is Westmont has so much to offer to our prospective businesses that can move here. The demographic that we serve, the nature of this community, and everything we have to offer, our transportation resources, we've got so much to offer. So that's what kind of makes our work easy. And it's not just myself. We have a whole team of people from our Westmont Development Group that work on this. It's really a team effort. You know, it ranges from fire department, it ranges community development, just a lot of people that make it all work. So it's a team effort.
One other, I think, and you may not be able to put this to us today, but all these projects, so much going on, the Nader Torium, the Homes on North Cass, the 63rd Street and everything in between. You got a number of what?
Does everybody see the monthly permit reports that's published? I would recommend taking a look at, so for example, in, when the mayor became mayor, I think that first year, we had about $550,000 in projects. This year, right now, year-to-date, we're at about $52 million. So, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's grown substantially. Steve, you've got even a longer view of, of this number, these numbers.
Yeah.
But no number in my head.
But each month, there's a, there's a report issued with, with building permits, the value of construction. And quite frankly, we are all suffering from the downturn in, in 12, 13, 14, 15. And somebody in the construction business, Trusty Barry, you've seen how things have picked up, and how difficult it is even to keep up with opportunities to do projects. You've got, you know, some builders are just turning away work, if that's right. But yeah, we've definitely seen a great upturn. And with that being said, the pipeline is always being worked on to fill it with potential future projects. We're talking with other developers for projects downtown. We're talking with, as Trusty Barry said, we're talking with the Helikeus Group, owners of Westview South and North, which we all can agree that that site is the perfect definition of blight. And it's finally great to see something, you know, progressing there. Now, we're hearing words, and let's see what the actions result, but I think we're moving in a great direction, so.
And I think there's a couple of businesses, too, that are new, that are continuing to expand. I know I talked with the owner of Scallywags at the TW Fest over the weekend, and he's now open in the mornings with coffee and everything. So there is a lot of positives in that 15 percent downtown. That's, that's a really great number, I think. Down and a half was good, too, but...
Downtown businesses are facing one of the largest challenges when it comes to occupancy levels. And our real challenge is finding the traditional mom-and-pop retailers that used to be out there. A lot of them have just been destroyed by Amazon, and their ability to compete nowadays just is almost non-existent. So we're working on it, though, believe me.
I do have to say, Larry, when you mentioned when I became mayor to today, most of that has to do with you. Really, you cater to the developers, you take care of the existing businesses, and I think, to your credit, we thank you for, for all you do.
Thank, thank you for the compliment, but really, you know, it's a team, truly a team effort. We can't, no one person can do any of this. It's always a team effort.
And I think most of us remember, Larry, that was your, you know, with your drive to put up that team concept, really has worked well, as you said, from the police department, fire department, Public Works, showing our new alleys.
Right.
All those things are so important to these potential developers. And Larry is available at all times. I was texting him even during the Bear game last week.
There was no game.
Yeah, right.
Happy to talk to you.
You know, Larry is available all the time, and he's always working pro-Westmont, and involved in Lyons Rotary, all things, you know, over and above. So really, just thank you, Larry. And, and I think the downtown vacancies in downtown gets a lot of attention, and we hear about it a lot from the residents. But when you go through this list of, you know, 15 to items where, where great things are going on, Pasquinnelli Drive, a lot of us don't see that, that that's a huge impact on, on all the businesses on Ogden Avenue, and the businesses on Pasquinnelli, and, and the overall value of our community. And again, just the Jeans Tire Project last night that we see in front of planning and zoning, you know, it's been floated $15 million in sales tax revenue.
15 to 20.
15 to 20. I mean, these are, these are big items. And Mr. Mayor, I know when, when you were driving us for 63rd Street, we, you're, the vision of, once one thing happened, the rest could go. And I think we're really starting to see that now. Started with Marianos. Of course, you know, we're seeing 63rd Street, and now feelers all down Cass. So let's hope the economy keeps rolling.
I want to give a shout out to Public Works. You know, you all met Drew Mitchell from Holiday Properties. So, and the mayor knows this, and Steve May knows this, we take developers on economic development tours through the community. And on the third time back, it was a Good Friday a few years ago, we met Drew in front of Village Hall at like 10:00 in the morning. We were driving to him. I said, well, let me show you our new alleys. So we pull into the, we pull into the alley, and Drew says, stop the car! He literally gets out on his hands and knees. He goes, this is great! This is fantastic! And so the impression, things like that make, that we're investing in our community, that we're investing in our infrastructure, that creates an impression on developers. And when they see, you know, how we interact with them compared to some other communities, it does make a positive difference. So I thank all of you also. Thank you.
You should show Drew our newly painted fire hydrants when they, they're almost...
Are you talking about those red ones?
Yeah, well, they're white now, but they'll be red soon.
Thank you, Larry. And that...
Trusty Barry.
If I could just add, so the report he was talking about is, I actually just forwarded it to you, and I'm going to apologize, I didn't realize that you weren't all included. It's a monthly report that's put out the, for, historically, it's just permit fee breakdowns, but for the last two years, they've added the total constructive value, and it's broken down from residential and commercial as well. But you add the two together, the investment, you know, as reported on the permit, in 2018 was 56 million, and year-to-date, this year is 53 million.
That's true. But then, I think, not only thanking Larry, but I think this board's been real aggressive to work with developers and get things done in the community. So I want to thank everyone. Trusty Barry.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, Trusty Guzzo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be November 21st, 4:30 here at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. Police Department, the Citizens Police Academy. It is a free nine-week class, September 25th through December 4th. There is still room for a few more. There's more information or, and to sign up, to sign up, go to our Village website. You can find all the information there. The RX Prescription Drug Takeback is October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Marianos at 63rd and our police station. Now, I would like to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, EMA, and all the volunteers for a wonderful 9/11 service last night. I had the great privilege of attending. We had a lot of people come on out, and it's, I just want to say, we never want to forget. So I just want to thank everyone who was involved. It was great, so thank you very much. There are pictures on the Village website. So thank you to everyone who attended, again to all of our Village staff. The Fire Department is once again hosting their Car Fit Safety Clinic. It is September 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:30. And it's a clinic that helps our seniors ensure they're properly fitted into their vehicles. They check the fluids, belts, hoses, and more. And I believe that's at the Headquarters Fire Station. Next, moving on to the Fire Department Silent Parade. It is October 11th at 7:00. It, all of our residents are invited to gather along Chicago Avenue with your flashlights. It's to honor those who have lost their lives to fires. I believe it leaves Hinsdale at 7:00. So it usually gets to us about 20 after 7:00. So it's a great emotional evening. I want to invite everybody out to come out to that. And then last, but definitely not least, the Fire Department is once again opening, hosting their Open House, October 12th, at Headquarters Station, 6015 South Cass Avenue. And it's October 12th, as I stated, 11 to 3. There will be hot dogs, chips, demos, games, the bounce house, and more. So come on out, bring the kids, bring everybody. It's just a great time as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And I know Chief Riley, that was your first event. It went real well, and we found out your nickname, Beautiful.
Uh-oh.
Trusty Addington.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'm going to be very quick this evening.
Did he say that?
Anyhow, only one thing. Community development is going to meet, as we said before, October the 10th. A lot of things are going to be on that agenda. We're talking about some of these new rules that we talked about, like storage containers, and getting those finalized so they can come in front of the board for votes. We may or may not be talking about the new marijuana laws and how that affects us, but that could be on the agenda. And finally, one of the last things that's on there is going to be, I think we're going to start opening discussions. I know we've done some stuff with this vaping, as far as restrictions through the, through the zoning codes, but if you read the papers and talk about the kids that are being hospitalized and some of the things, I just think we have to do a little more discussion with that. Fortunately, I don't know if we have a whole bunch that we can do as a community. It really needs us to, you know, kind of push, I think, between Springfield and Washington. But to me, that's a real problem. And so we're going to keep going forward, keep discussion, and keep working. And that's it, sir.
Well, thank you. Moving on, is there any items from the consent agenda any board member would like to remove?
Just to comment, I think that's a record on Trusty Addington.
Who I said! Can't believe I said I was going to be quick.
Shh, don't ask him any questions.
Wait until miscellaneous.
I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Thank you. First, this evening, on the consent agenda, first item, this is Finance Ordinance Number Nine, in the amount of $2,283,037.30. We have several purchase orders, first being Seiko Environmental Services.
It's in there.
$51,488. That's for material testing and soil testing at the new Public Works facility. Next is ESI Consultants, $28,719.2. This is design engineering services for the Gateway Corridor, the monument signs, the entrance signs. The, I guess elaborating on that, we had a, architectural design is one thing, but then there's the engineering component of actually, you know, installing them and getting the power to them and everything like that. Third purchase order, Illinois EPA, $25,984.86. This is the loan repayment for the West Burlington and North Lincoln Water Main replacement projects. Next is Curry Motors, $36,867. It's a replacement vehicle in the Fire Department. DuPage County, $30,752.81 is the ETSB Dugis Project. Next purchase order is Napleton Fleet Incorporated, $31,811. That is a vehicle replacement in the DEA Detective Vehicle. The total of purchase orders is $205,622.69. Takes the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Nine, to $2,488,659.72. Last on the consent agenda is a special event, Wicked West Fest Halloween Events. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, hosted Wicked West Fest Halloween events. First, community events permit. Second, street closures. Cass Avenue from Burlington to Chicago Naperville, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the third one is the live amplified sound permit. And it's not, Hunter, can you remind me of the date? Wicked what? October 19th for those three permit requests.
And again, it's on the consent agenda because it's a reoccurring event, and we approved these in the past. Any new event would come separate line item. Is that concluded?
It does, sir.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, your own. Motion made in second. Any questions, comments? Trusty Barry.
Yes, on item number six, the DEA vehicle, is that reimbursed through DEA money? I see it's non-budgeted.
Yes, it is. So it is covered by the DEA funds, and it's one of those where DEA funds can't be used to replace or fill in for budgeted items. So it's specifically not budgeted, though we have the money to pay for it, because if it were budgeted, then we couldn't pay for it with DEA money.
Okay. I love the rules.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other question? Scene nine, roll call, please.
Trusty Addington.
Yes.
Trusty Guzzo.
Yes.
Trusty Barker.
Yes.
Trusty Little.
Yes.
Trusty Barry.
Yes.
Trusty Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, award of bid proposal for the Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Section C Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Accepting the Bid Proposal from RW Dunhaman Company for the Village's Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Section C Project, and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The Village accepted bid proposals from one contractor for the CBD Alley Reconstruction Section C Project. The only bidder was RW Dunhaman, and with a low bid of $763,700. It was approximately 14 percent below the injuring estimate of $885,012. This alley is bounded between, from Naperville Road to Norfolk and Cass to Lincoln. RW Dunhaman has successfully completed past CBD alley projects that we've had, and we've been very happy with the work they've done for us. This last alley is, will complete everything just west of Cass Avenue. So all the alleys west of Cass will be completed after this project's done.
And only one bidder, wow.
Yeah, it, the part of the reason is that previous concrete, there's only so many companies that do it. And right now, in this area, there's only two. And the other company who just got done doing the other project with us really didn't like doing it, I'll be honest with you. Not because of us, they just didn't like doing the previous concrete part of it. They had no problem doing the brick part of it. They liked doing that. They liked doing blacktop. They really didn't like doing the previous concrete. And RW Dunhaman does a really good job. They almost have like a monopoly in the area because they do such a great job with it.
Didn't they do Kumnur?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a great company to work with.
Mike, is there a pricing consistent? Is it in line with what we've been paying?
Yeah, it's actually, this was actually a little bit cheaper because it's, you know, it's towards the end of the season, and I think they were looking to just kind of fill out the rest of the year. And we really did get a really good price on this. I mean, anytime you get 14 percent lower than what the injuring estimate is, that's pretty significant.
That's nice.
We thought the engineers just raised their estimate. That's what we thought.
Yeah.
Same kind of thing, Mike, is if, if the weather holds them back, they'll, they'll just kind of temporarily leave it till the spring.
Correct. Just like what they had to do this past year, where they just asphalted for the winter. If they can't get this done because of winter, I mean, the goal is, get this approved tonight, if they can get out there right away. I mean, the goal is to get it done before Thanksgiving. But for some reason, if they can't get it done, or if they, they know they, they won't, then they'll stop, and they'll just do the underground work first. They'll blacktop it, and they'll come back first thing in the, in the spring, and then they'll do the concrete and the brick right away. With the underground, they'll get done no problem before, before it gets too bad. But that's the goal. But unfortunately, you know, who knows with the weather. Hopefully, if the weather's great, we'll get it done. Hopefully, if the weather's great, we'll get it done before Thanksgiving.
And if they don't hit any other lines, didn't we hit a gas line here? They did, we didn't. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second.
Motion been made, second. To approve, any additional comments? Question, seeing on roll call.
Trusty Nero.
Yes.
Trusty Barry.
Yes.
Trusty Little.
Yes.
Trusty Barker.
Yes.
Trusty Guzzo.
Yes.
Trusty Addington.
Motion passes. New business B, an engineering agreement for the Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Section C project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering Group for Phase Three Construction Inspection Engineering and Material Testing Services on the Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Section C project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we're just requesting the approval of the sum of $81,306.96 for the Phase Three Construction Inspection Engineering and Material Services for the Village's CBD Alley Reconstruction Section C project. Alley Section C is bounded by, again, Cass to Lincoln, Naperville, Norfolk. Thomas Engineering has done all of our other projects with the alleys. They've done every alley project with us. They really have a good grasp of the engineering work that we, that we request of them and they're a great company to work with. I wholly, totally request that you approve this because they are really a good, a good engineering firm to work with.
Have a motion.
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second.
Nero. All right. On to question. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trusty Barry.
Yes.
Trusty Nero.
Yes.
Trusty Barker.
Yes.
Trusty Little.
Yes.
Trusty Addington.
Yes.
Trusty Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, miscellaneous. Anybody have anything else to add?
One item, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I forgot to mention, I think Jim might have, but Jim and I were at the TW Group Beer Fest.